Meeting of August, Tuesday, August 24th, 2021. This meeting and the Planning Board will be held in person and may be available as a live broadcast on Channel 18. Members of the public with an interest in any portion or specific item on the agenda should plan to attend in person. I'd like to make our usual recording notice. According to Massachusetts law, anyone who intends to record the meeting must first notify the Chair, who will then inform the other attendees at the start of the meeting. Is there anybody intending to record? Nope, that's good, so I call this meeting to order. Let's all rise and have our pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. So we'd like to open a public meeting. The first item on the agenda is a couple of A and Rs. Item number one is PB 2021-16, Vaisal at 15 Doane Road. I see Ernie.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman.
William Kroll.
This is the board. Good to see everybody.
Good to see you.
Been awhile. We made it through. And Dan Crotto with me from Moran Engineering. And Mr. Vassal, the top of the owner.
Know him too.
A few times. Would you like me to give a little background?
Please, let's start with you, Mr. Kroll.
We have the full board here tonight. We're impressed. So this is an approval not required plan, and Mr. and Mrs. Vassal own the property shown as lots one and two on the proposed plan. They purchased the property a couple of years ago, and what they've done, in my opinion, a good service to the town, is that they removed that burned out building that had been there for years and have rebuilt it and doing a great job, as usual, in constructing a house on that lot. But part of the master plan was for Lot Two shown on the plan is to be deeded to the owners of what used to be the Wolfel Plumbing and Heating Building, okay? Why do they want that Lot Two? Because they can use that extra area to add a fifth apartment above the garage, right? Because they needed the extra square footage. So I went before the Board of Appeals, October 30, 2019, with Mr. and Mrs. Vassal, who were possibly going to purchase the Wolfel Building, and got a variance from the Board of Appeals to allow this division that's shown on this plan. And the decision, as Mr. Ideman knows, the town planner, and he's reviewed it, the Board of Appeals allowed the division of that lot into two lots, Lots One and Two, as you see on the plan, so that the, where it shows the existing house, that Lot One has sufficient area and upland to meet all the requirements for a building permit, and that's how they're constructing that house there, leaving enough on Lot Two for us to then deed, for the Vassals to deed to the now new owner of the Wolfel property. And then in the meantime, we had a pandemic, so ordinarily, the variance would have to have been exercised within one year from when it was granted by the Board of Appeals, but it was paused or told, it's called, by the governor's order. And Mr. Ideman has, and Mr. Ideman and I have corresponded by email, and he agrees with me that the pause or tolling would take that decision through January of 2022, this coming January. So the variance has not lapsed, so we're seeking to exercise it by having this A and R plan endorsed by you, so that the Vassals can sell Lot One when they finish the new house, and then they can sell Lot Two to the new owner of the Wolfel Building. That's the master plan.
Very good. Any questions from the board? Mr. Ideman?
Yeah, thank you. Just going to outline on this plan, it's not Dan's fault. These plans require lots of lines, but especially where you have a river that kind of goes through the land, it's a little difficult to tell what's what. So I'm basically going to go around the perimeter of the existing property. So really what's happening is they're putting this line on the plan. This is an unbuildable lot. This will remain a buildable lot. This buildable lot maintains the required frontage in the zoning district. This doesn't have the required frontage, however, it does not need to, because it's unbuildable and is being established for purposes of conveyancing. It will be conveyed to this owner. This, actually, you'll see this theme carried out to our other A and R. Both of the bases for endorsement are the same. And I'm just going to read one line to you from Chapter 41, Section 81L. This is the basis. "Conveyances or other instruments adding to, taking away from, or changing the size and shape of lots in such a manner as not to leave any lot so affected without the frontage above set forth, which is the frontage required under the zoning bylaw, shall not constitute a subdivision." So that you'll see is the basis for both A and Rs tonight, and I will suggest now and I'll suggest later, that both of these A and R plans warrant an endorsement by the board. The building lot has the required frontage under the zoning bylaw. The other, what's called Lot Two, doesn't have frontage, but it's for purposes of conveyance and will be annexed to the neighboring property. I have provided a staff report to you. You can review it if you haven't done so already. I'd be happy to take any questions you have.
Any questions for the planner?
I have a question. You're going to convey that to Lot One. Will they have to come back for a special permit for the fifth apartment?
You know, until you mentioned that, I hadn't thought about that. I, I'm not sure.
Because the Board of Appeals, they say the Board of Appeals approved it, but we haven't seen it.
Yeah. I really haven't, I really haven't thought about that yet.
Your question is about 15 Doane Street?
Yes.
Well, no.
Route 28.
Route 28.
I got you. Okay. That's what I was trying to figure out, yeah.
They want to put apartments in the old Wolfel Building. So they wanted that lot for the extra apartment.
Mr. Kroll and I will communicate about that, yeah.
Any additional questions? Time to entertain a motion.
So I move that the Planning Board vote that the plan entitled Plan of Land in Harwich, Mass., prepared for Paul Vassal, Project 19-080 by Moran Engineering Associates, LLC, South Harwich, Mass., dated 7/15/21, stamped 7/16/21, does not depict a subdivision and that the Board endorsed the plan as not requiring approval under the subdivision control law.
Second. Have a motion. I have a second. Any further considerations? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Congratulations.
Thank you. I have one question. Mr. Chadwick, do you still have the Fu Manchu mustache underneath that? There we go. Okay, good. Thank you.
You weren't sure it was me, were you?
No, I wasn't. I didn't know.
Like an extra filter.
With the motorcycle bandana.
Couple of flanking fans.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Ms. Vassal?
It's been a long day, Dan. Actually, before everybody leaves, why don't we have the A and R plan endorsed, so we don't have to relearn?
Great.
It's a great idea.
But.
And why don't we do a paper, one paper plan as well?
Anywhere, right?
Well, on the signature block, yeah. Anywhere in the signature block.
Special secrets?
Oh, you want to sign both?
Oh, with both? Does this take a special pen?
That can be any pen, right?
It can be any pen, sure.
I go.
Yeah.
Right here.
Couldn't find my pen.
Oh.
Oh, yeah.
You can take it right now.
I need to, I need to defend something like that.
I remember when I was on the Planning Board years ago, that's what we did.
Really?
I also need to put up my dog as well, you know, just in case.
Do this. Do not stay on.
I'm going to toss a rubber band. When it gets to you, can you hold on to it? Thank you.
John, are you keeping the paper one?
I'm keeping the paper.
I think just, we just have one paper copy, so.
We're just going to keep it in our files for posterity.
I felt like two.
There are two there?
I know, it felt like two. It's going to be paper.
Quality paper.
Nothing but the best.
Nothing lost from Moran Engineering.
Geez, now pregnant woman's body.
Yeah.
Whatever's in there when you press the button.
I swear.
So are you, Dan?
All right, great. Thank you, everybody. Register tomorrow.
Thank you, Mr. Crotto. So that settles second, the first item of new, but the first A and R. The second A and R is opening, a public meeting on PB 2021-17, Miller, 231 and 0, Church Street.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Members of the Planning Board, Mr. Ideman. My name is Todd Chapman. I'm a registered professional land surveyor in Massachusetts that works for Coastal Engineering Company, and I have with me Mrs. Miller. Mrs. Miller owns about a six and a half acre property on Church Street, and she would like to carve off a non-buildable lot and convey it to the, one of the owners on Washburn Way to afford them a little more privacy for their pool in their backyard. This plan, she has, everybody has sufficient frontage. It meets all of the zoning requirements, and it's basically a simple one lot plan conveying one lot to another. There is a notation under Lot Two that is, it is not buildable, and there is also a note up under the notes section that says Lot Two is, is not buildable and is to be conveyed to the abudders.
Very good.
If anybody has any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer them.
Any questions from the board at this time? Want to hear from Mr. Ideman?
Yeah, the, I provide a staff report on this one as well. I'm just going to outline the existing configuration of the land. Basically, this big pork chop. And in service of trying to give you as much information as I could, I actually provided you two older approval not required plans for the property, and I think there may have been some confusion about it. This does not constitute a separate lot today. There is this line that's provided, which is effectively a zoning line that the surveyor put on the plan, and there is this right-of-way record. Those are not lot lines, just so you're not confused. This doesn't constitute a separate lot today. Once upon a time, it did, but it was subsequently put into a perimeter plan, so all of that is in perimeter configuration today. So what is proposed is carving off this approximate, I think it's about a half acre, unbuildable parcel to convey to the neighbor, and the same logic applies to the first A and R we discussed. The remaining buildable lot is this one, and it retains the frontage as required under the zoning bylaw here, approximately 150 feet. So again, this is an approval not required plan that I would say warrants your endorsement. There's a little discretion there. Church Street is an improved public way, and there is the frontage as required under the zoning bylaw on it, and Lot Two is not a building lot. It's an unbuildable lot. So with that, I'd be happy to take any questions you have.
Any questions for the planner?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Chadwick?
John, if, looking at the bottom of, on the bottom of that plan, Lady Slipper Lane, private way, not constructed, if at some point in the future that were to be constructed as drawn, would the balance, where those lines you just said are not division lines, would the balance of that property, if it were decided to be split, be a build, then make those a buildable lot, or would that then be considered a subdivision?
You know, all you planning mensches think similarly. Bill asked me the question, Bill asked me the question earlier, so that does not...
Can I just say something? That the three and a half acre parcel that I bought off of Lady Slipper Lane has been donated to the Conservation Trust in Harwich. So that's already taken care of. So the three and a half acre plot, we, and I, I probably could build, if I wanted to knock my house down or do something, up houses back there, but it's not my intention. It's my intention to do the restrict, the back property to the Conservation Trust through Michael and, right, Michael Locke. I have no intentions of developing anything, but I just want you to know that I have given a piece of property, three and a half acres of the town of Harwich, and, you know, we have our parcel of land, or I have, my husband died. No intention of making any developments.
No intention of building on it, no doubt.
No.
I understand.
No. I'd have to knock the barn down or the house down. No. I, if I gave three and a half acres to Conservation Trust, I'm not going to develop the rest of my property. You know, it's just not in the cards.
So let me go through the boring legal analysis. Because that's, and as a former trustee of the Harwich Conservation Trust, before I was conflicted out with my position here, we greatly appreciate, you know, what you've worked on with Michael. Lady Slipper Lane does not de facto provide frontage for the remaining land to the north. What would have to happen, so it's a kind of a stranger to the title, stranger to the plan. Perhaps Ms. Miller could grant rights in that, to use for Lot One, doesn't sound like she intends to, but to have any further building lots there, there would have to be some sort of division or subdivision plan.
There is a buildable lot off of Lady Slipper Lane owned by one of the Ryder girls, and it's probably a two and a half acre parcel below the three and a half acre parcel that I donated to the town, but she's in Cal, Andy, that's her name, Andy, I don't know what, but. My neighbors, Richard and Dagmar Ryder, own their property. His sister owns the two and a half acre lot behind their house off of Lady Slipper Lane, so that could possibly be built on.
Yeah, we were just talking about the land north of Lady Slipper Lane.
Nothing else there can be. I'm sorry, I'm...
Mr. Chair.
Yes, please.
For me, it really doesn't matter for us right now. It's, it's, you're simply asking us for an A and R, so what's buildable in the future? I mean, that could change tomorrow with the zoning change, so, so, you know, what you say today really...
Doesn't matter.
Doesn't, you know, doesn't matter for good, for bad, for ugly, so it's, you know, it's just, I don't think it's important for us to worry about that when it comes to, to an A and R.
Right.
Okay.
It isn't. The point of law I wanted you to understand is when you lay out a private subdivision road, it doesn't automatically give frontage or rights to all abutting land. And this well-known case comes out of Chatham.
Yeah.
A Chatham subdivision case from the early 1960s, so that's the point of law you can take with you, and you can tell your friends at cocktail parties you attend and things of that nature.
Unfortunately, someone's developing land across the street from us.
Across Church Street?
Yeah. What's his name? Marsh, Bill Marsh. He gets every piece of land that's available.
Well, that's his business.
All right, so do we have any further questions for Ms. Ideman?
None.
Do we have a consensus?
I'll make a motion that the planning, that the plan entitled Judith B. Miller, 229 Church Street, Harwich, Mass., approval not required, Plan of Land Sheet C dot 1 dot 1 dot 1, prepared by Coastal Engineering Company Orleans, Mass., dated 7/30/21, stamped each 221, does not depict a subdivision and that the Board endorsed the plan as not requiring approval under the subdivision control law.
Second. Have a second? Any further questions? Hearing none? All in favor? Please vote aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Have your A and R.
Thank you.
Endorsed A and R.
I'm going to go through the same exercise, if that's all right with you.
Absolutely.
Let me get our magical pen.
The secret pen.
At least you convinced Bill everything's right in the world.
My husband's same question. And you didn't talk, honest.
Well, I'm talking about Bill Kroll.
Oh, Bill Kroll. Oh, yeah.
He was comfort-loving to me.
Yeah, he wasn't sure.
Right.
Thank you, Mr. Chapman.
Thank you. Everybody have a good evening.
You too. Okay, very good. It looks like next item up is our minutes. Has everybody had a chance to review them?
Mr. Chair, may I just interject one thing?
Please.
I want to be mindful of what the board mentioned last time. I didn't provide you those minutes, you know, with three or four days in advance. However they were done, if you don't feel comfortable approving them tonight because you haven't had the time to review, it won't hurt my feelings, nor will it hurt Alicia's if you just defer, you know, your approval to the next meeting, but...
We got them by email.
You had them by email, but I think my recollection from the last meeting is you wanted a lot of advance, so if you want to just, if you haven't had the time to review them and wanted to defer them next meeting, that would be fine, but we, since they were ready, we wanted to get them out to you.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes of August 10th, 2021. Second. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? None. Yeah, I think it was a pretty straightforward meeting.
I think so.
So.
Done.
Done. So now we have the advisory opinions on the Board of Appeals material from August 23rd, which is today, separate sheet at the back of the packet. Any comments here, John?
No, I've looked through them all and they're relatively standard special permits to alter or extend pre-existing non-conforming single-family residences, though Mr. McParland is here, there's one down on Saquaton Lane.
Right. There's always one.
There's always one.
But it's, it's not my property.
No, it isn't, but you seem to be the cap...
I'm interested in that area.
Yes, that part of town, yeah.
Over the years.
And that then brings us to the signatures on delayed documents for board's vote. That's probably not the right way to put it. What's the right, plans, decisions, and evidence of board votes. So this was a contingency plan for board policy, so that if we were in a situation where we couldn't all meet together, it looks like we have a red line and a normal copy to do, I mean, this looks like it reads straight off of what we were talking about, so...
This is my last best chance. If you don't like this, like I said, you don't have to approve anything, but what I tried to do was go back, several members were uncomfortable, that I think I just put there, if they're, if you weren't able to timely sign.
Right.
So what I've tried to tie this into is the particular kind of statutes that are required for either signing minutes or doing decisions, and just kind of use that language, and clearly they're contingencies. It states what the standard policy is in the first instance, and if there is some sort of problem, you know, who can sign.
Right.
And I, you know, last time I told Mary what I expect to do is, is necessary, maybe, put this on record. I don't know on day one if we, if we'd have to do that. First of all, we should see how frequently we were using that policy.
So just from a, from the perspective of, you know, thinking of the registry, and like if, in the case of a plan where they're checking your signatures, I'd almost think you'd want this, you'd want a copy of this recorded when you're, every time you've done it, so, you know, an attested copy from the clerk's office that's stamped, that gets recorded with the plan, or that gets recorded with the decision, so that in the future, if somebody questions it, it's recorded with it, and it, and it's easier to find for, because the title examiner may not pick up, like they usually go on signatures, but they might not be able to find a policy that's recorded somewhere that's not tied in to the record title.
Yeah.
So that's, that's my only thought with it, but, you know, otherwise makes sense.
Yeah.
You know, because, yeah, we couldn't get into signed plans for months.
That's right.
I really hope not.
Yeah, here within the required legal, legal timeframes, I think you spell it out so that whatever interpretation they want to make, you know, they have to prove it, so...
It gets to Bill's point, too, that this is not done for the convenience of a, of an applicant.
Right.
It's done to save our bacon, potentially.
Right.
Yeah. So if you, you know, if you like it, it's, it's there to be adopted.
So I move, I move that we vote to adopt the Harwich Planning Board policy entitled Signatures, Endorsements on Plans, Decisions, and Other Documents to Evidence the Board's Vote, as amended and included in our, our pack of this evening.
Yeah, it's eight, it's eight, 1721 is the draft date.
Dated seven...
August 17th.
Dated August, yes. Draft dated August 17th, 2021. I see that now. Thank you.
A motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second. Any further questions or discussion? Why don't we have a vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Again, unanimous evening. Terrific. Very good. Do we have any other briefings from other boards and commissions? Any correspondence on, I didn't see anything. So this was a contingency plan for board policy so that if we were in a situation where we couldn't all meet together, it looks like we have a red line and a normal copy to do. I mean, this looks like it reads straight off of what we were talking about, so.
This is my last best chance. If you don't like this, like I said, you don't have to approve anything. But what I tried to do was go back. Several members were uncomfortable that I think I just put there, if they're, if you weren't able to timely sign.
Right.
So what I've tried to tie this into is the particular kind of statutes that are required for either signing minutes or doing decisions and just kind of use that language. And clearly, they're contingencies. It states what the standard policy is in the first instance. And if there is some sort of problem, you know, who can sign?
Right.
And I, you know, last time I told Mary, what I expect to do is, is necessary, maybe, put this on record. I don't know on day one if we'd have to do that. First of all, we should see how frequently we were using that policy.
So just from the perspective of, you know, thinking of the registry and like if, in the case of a plan where they're checking your signatures, I almost think you'd want this, you'd want a copy of this recorded when you're, every time you've done it. So, you know, an attested copy from the clerk's office that's stamped, that gets recorded with the plan or that gets recorded with the decision so that in the future, if somebody questions it, it's recorded with it. And it, and it's easier to find for, because the title examiner may not pick up. Like, they're usually good on signatures, but they might not be able to find a policy that's recorded somewhere that's not tied in to the record title.
Yeah.
So that's, that's my only thought with it. But, you know, otherwise makes sense.
Yeah.
You know, because, yeah, we couldn't get into signed plans for months.
That's right.
I really hope not.
Here, within the required legal timeframes. I think you spell it out so that whatever interpretation they want to make, you know, they have to prove it, so.
It gets to Bill's point, too, that this is not done for the convenience of an applicant.
Right.
It's done to save our bacon, potentially.
Right.
So if you, you know, if you like it, it's there to be adopted.
So I move, I move that we vote to adopt the Harwich Planning Board Policy Entitled Signatures, Endorsements on Plans, Decisions, and Other Documents to Evidence the Board's Vote as amended and included in our packet this evening.
Yeah, it's eight, it's eight, 17/21 is the draft date.
Dated seven...
August 17th.
Dated August, yes. Draft dated August 17, 2021. I see that now. Thank you.
Motion, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second. Any further questions or discussion? Why don't we have a vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Again, unanimous evening. Terrific. Very good. Do we have any other briefings from other boards and commissions? Any correspondence on, I didn't see anything in the package for correspondence?
I do want to brief you on something last night, just shortly, a brief brief. I was at the select board meeting last night, updating the board on local comprehensive plan. So I just want to let you know that that was very enthusiastically received by the select board, all of them, for a variety of different reasons. We also discussed the amount of funds we have encumbered. We discussed potential timeframes to get that done. So I think really the next step is getting the RFP done. And Chairman McCaskill would like a draft version by September 7th. So I'm going to try to endeavor to get him a draft RFP by September 7th.
Yeah, I was going to say, that's awfully fast.
I'll try. I'll try.
Tell us again what you're going to...
It's a, it's a, an RFP for the master plan, or local comprehensive plan update, specifically to hire a consultant.
Us to hire a consultant or...
For the town to hire a consultant. The plan would be prepared in consultation with town staff, town officials. The planning board really leads the effort under the charter and under state law. We would have a consultant work with us who would deal largely about, on logistics, outreach, engagement. Because I would also envision that we would have this plan certified by the Cape Cod Commission as consistent with the regional policy plan as we've had the 1993, 2000, and 2010, or 2011 plan. We could also actually ask the Cape Cod Commission staff to assist us as well.
Right.
Which in the past, they've always been
Yeah.
very cooperative.
Yeah.
There's a woman there, isn't there?
Is the executive director...
T. R. Cordjov is the one...
She's historic.
She, right, she does the preservation, the historical stuff, but who else?
I was there. I was a rarity as a male at the Cape Cod Commission. I'll be honest with you.
It was your title, John. I don't recall.
I was the chief regulatory officer. So I dealt with all the, I dealt with all the regulatory problems and had to have a thick skin.
Yes.
It's been silent speaking of the commission. We haven't heard back from them on the design guidelines. I expected to hear back from them this month. I think the clock is out on that, so.
I can contact them again.
Yeah.
I think they were, you know, the answer was, my, the answer to my question was somewhat flexible, that we'll try to get back the end of summer, beginning of fall.
Right.
Yeah, I imagine they are busy. But I think it's in relatively good shape. But they are generating, as you recall, the graphics, which are... Pictures tell a thousand words. You can have all the narrative you want, but those graphics are going to be invaluable to conveying to a potential developer what the intent of the board was in adopting those, the West Harwich Special District.
Well, it's just that we've got a dog and pony show to do. Once we get them, roll them out, get the hearings and what have you. So just don't want to make sure, I just want to make sure we get it lined up before. Next, it wouldn't be, what's, the next town meeting is going to be? We've got plenty of time for May, but is there a special town meeting?
There is, but it's not, you don't have to take it to town meeting.
Right, okay. Oh, if we don't, I thought we did.
The entire reason the board did the zoning article, the last town meeting, was to authorize the development of guidelines and regulations. And even that was belt and suspenders, I'd argue. But these will be regulations, they won't be incorporated into the zoning bylaw itself.
Okay.
So you'll just be promulgating them under your own authority and the authority that was granted under that zoning article, which we've just heard, surprise, surprise, the AG approved.
Right, right. Greg?
Mr. Chairman, John, back to the RFP. Did Charlene start some work on...
She did.
Okay.
And I shouldn't minimize that too much. She did an awful lot of work, which will really... Yeah, if I was to make this September 7th deadline, it would be because of the work Charlene put in on a draft RFP. And, you know, grateful also that she had the foresight to have a couple hundred thousand dollars, you know, encumbered for it.
Locked away, right.
Yeah, in tough economic times. So I was really, really appreciative that she was able to get that done.
We've been talking about that for, since I've been on the board in 2016. I think we started talking about the next round, so. Daunting work ahead.
Time to go.
Daunting work ahead.
For us.
Yes.
Us, all of us, yeah.
And you to lead the way.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Boom, we're there. Great. Thanks for the shortcut.